We'll call this December fourteenth, Jackson County Commission Meeting to Order. We have our roll call.
District one, Mr. Guthy.
Present.
District two, Mr. Bandler.
Present.
District three, Mr. Miller.
Present.
District four, Mr. Edelman.
Present.
Chairman also present.
The forum is present, so we can't conduct business. I'd like to quickly introduce our chairman for the day, Dick from this, and he's been with me for the day, and I think it's been very... Jake, I'm like quickly.
Yes.
But hopefully, he's learned a little bit about what we do, but I really appreciate you joining me today. If you have anything that you'd like to say or...
Ah, respect, which I did. People can say what they want to say, but y'all really do like care for each other a lot, so.
Thank you.
Again, really enjoy him meeting with me today, and he's got a good interest in what we've had going on. So with that, move on to our invocation, Mr. Porter and his pledge.
Well, God, our Father, we're blessed to be here again. I know the weeks gone by, and well, thankful for that. I thank the presence of all those that are here today. We pray that you'll watch over us and guide us all, especially those that are serving the public, public office and other means. We're so thankful for these men and women that serve us in Jackson County. Be with them and their families in this holiday season. There is one person in the commission office that needs special prayer. God, we pray that you'll be with Anna and her family and the loss of their loved one. Comfort them and guide them as we know that you can. Watch over us all through these holidays. We always offer a special prayer, God, for those who, men and women in the armed services right now, many of them and many more of them are in harm's way. Be with them, God, protect them, guide them, comfort their families while they're gone, and bring them home safely. Watch over us all, forgive us in Christ's name.
Amen. Blessed be the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna forego the minutes. We didn't have time to get those together because of changes last week, so forego that. We'll have that on the next meeting's agenda for the November ninth minutes. Next, I would approve the agenda. We have nine items on the agenda. I'd like to add a number ten regarding the council on aging, a request from the council on aging, and also if we can move item number seven to the item number one, take care of that. Any change, other changes in the opposition to those changes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with those changes?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. No words of presentations, and we have one individual sign up to speak, Mr. Gary Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, citizens of Scottsboro. Last week, I did speak on a, on an issue concerning court referral, community corrections. I'm gonna speak a little bit again about that situation. I have reviewed some more documents this, this week, today, and this morning. Here's some very definitive concerns. I think the commission will be reviewing those documents. I know Mr. Hodges will be reviewing them, as I've had some conversations with them. The concern, which has been reported in the media, particularly relates to conflicts of interest in reviewing the policies of community corrections, court referral. They forbid a conflict of interest, and folks, I'm telling you, I'm asking you to look real hard at that because there's some definitive conflicts of interest, interest in community corrections and court referral, which violate their own policy. They're in violation of their own policy. Also, another item of concern is their drug testing protocol. Currently, a person that tests positive for a substance, they're substance abusers. They are carried forth maybe for weeks, even a month, before they are called in, and most time, they're arrested when they're called in. That is not the proper protocol. If a person tests positive, they should be called in immediately or as soon as possible. I mean, the folks got ways to contact, be contacted, or they can send the sheriff out to get them, if they need be, you know, to bring them in over there. The protocol is if they screen, on a screen, they test, they need to be called in, find out what's going on with them in their life, if they are abusing, and then submit to another test at that particular time to confirm that that screening test was either positive or negative. There's a problem over there. The county commission passed a resolution in nineteen ninety-six, again nineteen ninety-eight, to form the program as a nonprofit entity. That's y'all's resolution. Y'all's resolution, you can dissolve that program and put it places under the county. That is my belief. And it's my belief, if there can't be oversight placed onto this program and these people and the program that they're running, maybe that's what y'all will do. Seriously, consider that. I'm carrying forth my inquiries, and I, I report. I'm a citizen reporter, and I'm gonna continue inquiring into this, and I'm telling you, folks, I get people every week, every day practically, that call me up and tell me about issues over there, and all these people ain't lying. And law enforcement ain't lying to me, 'cause they come to me. Y'all ain't lying to me. Y'all know what the situation is, and I'm not saying these folks are lying to me over there. Of course, I ain't got the chance to talk to them, 'cause they won't grant an interview. But there's a problem here. I'm asking for your help, and it needs to go forward sooner rather than later. You know, you might think about forming a special committee to look at this, to include court referral folks on the committee, to include attorneys in town on the committee, include medical staff on the committee. I mean, we're supposed to be trying to help people. Yeah, if they're, if they mess up and they steal from people, if they're consistent, repetitive substance abusers, there's a problem. But I don't think most of the people are like that. I think most people have a medical issue that's not being properly addressed, and this is why I'm here telling y'all about this again. And I'm gonna continue looking in this, and I ain't, I ain't going away on this until there's some sort of accountability that is implemented within Jackson County. Because like I said, this county commission placed forth the program as it is. I believe that the county commission has the power, and I'm not saying I'm right, I couldn't be wrong, you know, but I believe y'all do have the power to correct the inequities in the program and sit the wheels going straight. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions, be happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. We have no old business, we'll move on to new business, and the first item is a motion to amend variance from the subdivision regulations. This was discussed at a work session last week. Further on the package, again, this is the change in variance to add two hundred feet, is that correct? So before any further discussion, we have a motion to approve this item.
Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Say.
Any discussion, further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. And there is... Next item, a motion to approve the foundation of this fund. Again, what was the need for these dollars and where are the dollars to be allocated?
Um, that goes to the Stevenson...
So that was presented last week, the amount of one thousand?
Um, it was a thousand.
A thousand dollars, so we have a motion to approve that, those funds.
Make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Say a motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve the proposed equipment purchase for Public Works Department of Snowplows. We'll review the dollars a little bit more in depth as we continue in some of the other items on the weakness that has been stated, but in regard to the snowplows, I think the only thing we did not say was where we purchased out of that, whether that be one hundred or one eleven. But we have a motion on how to proceed with that and which item, which fund to purchase those out of.
I have a motion to purchase, but... Welcome to the commission, we're looking at the dollars.
I think we could, one eleven?
I mean, I'm just saying.
I think either one would be fine. If we're looking at this other equipment, either one. Uh, one eleven is the one that gets reimbursed when we charge the state, so that would work out.
That's a person in the election.
So motion to purchase these items out of, have the purchase of five out of fund one eleven, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this. I just want to clarify, and we did talk about it last week, and it was very well explained, I think, in the articles that were written, but again, we were able to charge the state for the hours or bill the state for the hours. These are used, so this is something that with its no event can pay for itself very quickly. So I think it's a smart business decision in that sense to make, make that a smart, smart decision with the taxpayer dollars in that case as well. So any other questions or comments? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve the proposed agreement with the city of Bridgeport, this was in hearing plan development for Ferry Road and Sixth Street paving. This was presented to us last week. So I think we've discussed this. Were there any other questions before we proceeded? Because I don't know if this was the first time for anyone to look at it last week. Any other questions before we proceed on this? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agreement that presented?
Make a motion.
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
Say.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, in the future, for us to really ponder, if we're doing work in municipalities, let's try to, I know we have to recoup some costs in our labor and our equipment, but you know, these municipalities, several of them have talked to Mr. Bandler and myself, their funding, they're hurting just like we are. We've already budgeted a lot of our labor and our budget. If we could possibly look at maybe cutting our labor and equipment, maybe fifty percent from municipality that is joining in with the payment of these projects, it's something I think we should consider in the future.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can take a look, and this one, you know, kind of pressed early, I guess, but if we can try to get these out to commissioners a little bit earlier so that we have a little more time to review, then maybe we can do that in the future, but we've had, you know, we've been working with Bridgeport a little bit late notice, I guess, in how quickly they needed this done, so, but we can, we can work to see what other things can be done.
Maybe from these two proposals forward, we'll, we'll look at maybe cost sharing in the equipment and labor of these municipalities.
Any other questions or comments? So we have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, the next item regarding the town of Woodville with the proposed agreement with the town of Woodville for drainage structure replacement, again, presented to us last week at the work session. So do we have a motion to approve of this?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Say.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? The same concern here.
Same concern.
Okay. We can take a look at that. Any other questions or comments? And all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, next item, motion to approve the twenty sixteen resourcing project selection commission to select a project from the proposed list. We have, again, this was presented to us last week, and a decision has been made on which road we want to proceed with. So is there any recommendation or thoughts on how we need to proceed with this?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend we do County Road thirty-three. I mean, it's, all these roads are about the same percentage. One's got a little more traffic on the other, but you know, if we drop below our seventy mark, we're gonna lose our federal funding. I think that'd tend to worse condition to lose our funding, so I want to make sure we 're on the right of funding side. I'm gonna move the, I, County Road thirty-three.
Okay, so we have a motion then to proceed with thirty-three for the federal dollars?
I'll make a motion that we do County Road sixty-three.
Okay, let's, before we do that, if...
Only because I think thirty-three is very worthy also with the amount of traffic daily on that road, which is up to twenty-five hundred. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of traffic, and I want to reiterate something real quick. This daily traffic rate, this is one, are we having base failures on that road right now?
There are some areas that would require extra damage.
Yes, sir. That's what, that was the information that I had also. We can't do more than one, and that's correct. Correct.
Okay, so we've, we've got a vote on one or the other. Are there any other recommendations on the road to go with?
You got a motion forward in a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask you both to rescind your motions very quickly so we can discuss this a little bit.
No, we're saying, we're saying.
So are there any, any other discussions on, on which road to proceed with? What we can do is take, take the motion, vote on it. If it does pass, we'll vote on the second, so if we're gonna proceed that way, unless we have other thoughts.
Let me ask a question, I might not even have a motion if, if this is what you want to do. Thirty-three, you're currently off there right now, big base failure.
Yes, sir.
Do you have an opinion? If you do, I'd like to hear.
There's no wrong choice, honestly, and this is, I know this is gonna be tough when I presented it. As I've described it, and you all have heard, when the need is so large and the funding is so small for the need, if you guys said we're gonna pave all three of these, I could lay down three more that you would struggle with. So aside from the information I have on the rating, the A and P weighing that out, with some seat of the pants knowledge on riding the road, there's really nothing else I can offer to you. There's no wrong choice on this paper, so I know that, I know that don't cut anything in dry for you, but there's honestly no wrong choice.
When does I'll dot do their regrading of the...
It'll be late.
End of year?
Yes, sir, once a year, typically springtime.
In your opinion, the work that's been done on thirty-three and the work that needs to be done on Sixth Street, how much is that gonna affect the grading of those roads?
A lot of that depends on the winter we'll have, so it's kind of like I described before, you know, the condition of roads are not linear. I think typically, we've always kind of gone worst first. That's just, that's been the state's approach, and that's been the mentality with pavement preservation. But keep it in mind that it's not linear, and once you get to a certain condition and you have cracks and potholes and things that are, once they open up so wide, if we have a rough winter, and all the water and everything else can permeate into the base, then there's gonna be problems likely on every one of these. So a lot of it depends on the winter that, that we have, that just, you know, on the condition it is when springtime goes by there.
A portion of thirty-three has been paved with this year's federal dollars, correct?
Yes, sir.
This would get it to the base of the mountain, this project, or...
Yeah. Looking for some, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Some box coated with and stuff, shoulder requirement.
Some width limitations in there that, that would prevent us from receiving federal money or...
How big is that, yeah? And what's the condition of that?
From four seventy to the noble home?
It's poor condition.
It's probably the worst section to me, one of the worst sections on the road.
From four seventy, all the way to the top of the mountain, it's worse, but I know from Martin, I'm talking about, we've had for all time, federal dollars and shoulder widths.
You've got here that we last paved that in twenty-twelve with G treatment. Would you explain that and why didn't, didn't it last?
I'm not real familiar with that work that went on, but it's just a surface treatment. So it's, it's my speculation that it was just, like we were discussing before, it was just a Band-Aid to try to seal up some of the cracks until it could be prolonged in the city and the surface in the near future.
Do we have a motion on how to proceed with...
County Road thirty-three.
Information on County Road thirty-three, proceed with that. First, we've, okay, Mr. Guthy, do we have a second?
Say.
All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say, is it? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. I need to say, it looks like I made a mistake. There's one item that is not on the agenda that should be regarding County Road six ninety-three. I thought that was on here. Could we entertain a motion to go ahead? We'll add this.
Number eleven?
Yes, we add that as number eleven. So we have motion, go ahead and add that.
Make a motion.
Motion in a second.
Say.
Okay, all those in favor, opposed say no. Okay. Apologize for that. Next item, motion to approve the sign for proposed resolution for Knockmanning Road. Presented in a previous work session. For any further discussion, have a motion to approve this item. Do we have a motion to approve this item?
Is that to speak here?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Say.
Okay, any discussion on this, further discussion? Okay, I think this was engineering recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Motion in a second, anything else? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Next item, motion to approve purchase of the pickup trucks for sanitation we received. We did on the pickup truck for sanitation. Mr. Robertson, you wanna go over that?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, on the, I'm presenting this in two. We've actually got two bids right here. On the first one, the half-ton trucks, we did these out last year, and those trucks couldn't be fulfilled due to the, they stopped production on them, so I sent out bids, sent out them to five different vendors and received these two back. We have one here from Harbin Ford, and you can see the price of twenty-seven eight ninety-six, And then we have the other one. The other one's gonna be from Gibber and Braw, and they come in at twenty-seven six forty-eight Two hundred and forty-some odd dollars difference between each of them, with a three percent local bid law that we have, we could stay local with that bid if we got, which is two. Also, and now this money's right here, would come from the, from our cash reserve. This year, we, and we've also put in our budget for F three, or for one-ton truck, and I also sent those out too, with two of them coming back in, one of them at Harbin Ford, and it coming in at twenty, twenty-seven eighty-one. The other one received back from Gibber and Braw, and it coming in at twenty-six eight seventy-nine forty-six, which is, again, just over two hundred dollars difference in each other. So again, with the three percent local bid law, I think if we choose to, it's a stay local, and this would come out this year's budget for that one ton.
So clarifying, the one ton we did budget for this year, the others would come out of sanitation cash balance that's standing.
That's two, correct?
Two pickup trucks and one one-ton truck.
So less than sixty on those pickups and then the... So do we have a motion on how we want to proceed? Or do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Mr. Robertson?
I'll make the motion, we go with Harbin and stay local.
Okay, on both bids?
Both of them.
Okay, so the two, the one time, have a motion. Mr. Guthy, do you have a second? Any further discussion, questions? Okay, we have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, next item, motion to discuss a property agreement. You have a memorandum of intent in the packages, and Mr. Porter, can you explain the best way to explain it?
I can. It's, it's pretty simple. All it does is memorialize the discussions between county and the property owner, so that those discussions can continue. It doesn't bind the county to do anything or to not do anything. It would just authorize the chairman to continue those negotiations and let's do the investigation regarding the property purchase, and it lets the landlord know that the county is serious about these discussions. It may not come to anything, but it would allow the chairman to continue those negotiations and discussions. Any purchase, any final agreement would have to come back to the commission for approval.
So any questions or comments on this? Again, this is kind of the start of an official process, correct? And then as we move forward, we'll come back to the commission for any approvals necessary. Any questions or comments? We have a motion to approve the agreement?
Make a motion.
Motion in a second?
Say.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay. Next item regarding the council aging, if we get, if everybody should have a copy, and this chairman regarded a request for a change.
So nothing on the table?
What's that?
So nothing on the table?
I hope we have an extra one. You can have mine, no, I'm gonna... Could you, if you would, point it...
We have recently continued to get to hire a part-time driver, and that driver, Gib, worked out exceptionally well, but because of health issues, he is having to resign. We also have continued about a substitute driver, and we didn't get a qualified applicant for that position. And we're, we're having a really hard time because both of those positions, there were, there was nothing in the wave benefits, no holidays, no overtime, no, no insurance, nothing. So we felt like that if we could increase the amount that we can pay and combine those jobs and have it as a full-time position and be able to offer insurance and benefits, it would be more worth a person's time to apply for it, that would be willing to stay with the position and be able to handle it in a full-time capacity.
In the past six months, how many times have we interviewed for that? Two or three times for the temporary?
Uh, yes.
And then twice for the part-time, right?
Mm-hmm.
But it's just, it's hard to keep someone with that position. The latter here has an amount not to exceed that amount. This year, I think it would be affordable because the delegation did allot funds back to the council aging, and they took it out last year, and they put it back this year. Of course, knowing that, the possibility is that it won't be there next year, so if we did move forward with this, we'd have to be prepared that that position may not exist next year. But any, what questions or comments on this?
Is the seven thousand dollars just not to exceed seven thousand more than what the position we paid? It's not seven thousand total.
It's the part-time and the temporary plus seventy.
So, so if we do this, we combine them, you're saying we won't have to come back and ask for a substitute down the road? We're not gonna need a substitute anymore?
Right, right. We did have one in place already, but her hours are limited because she was a former employee and she's retired, so she can't work over a certain number of hours. But to be able to cover any off-time for the drivers, to be able to cover any sick leave, Larry Anderson, our coordinator, has been having to drive quite a bit, and then with the part-time position becoming open, you know, that, that puts a lot more hours, and we can't cover it with the sub that we have, so this would be a person that would do the part-time position as well as any substitute, you know, covering where it needs to be covered out in the county, and getting, getting the drivers home at an earlier time, too, because they, they're for really long hours.
Any other question or comments? We can move forward with this, this afternoon, or we can postpone it in our work session in another meeting, but we obviously need to move forward with something quickly, but I wanted to put tonight, in case you were ready to move forward with it, if not, again, we can discuss it further.
I make a motion to move forward with it. Make a motion to move forward with the reconciliation.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this item? If we do this, of course, we'll advertise immediately on the same scale as the other drivers. Uh, I think we do, again, need to go into this knowing, depending on what we come into next year, to be prepared with that. Okay, that one is up here. So we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, the last item is regarding County Road 693. Uh, this was discussed at the previous work session, and, uh, I guess first, Mr. Porter, I think you have been, uh, had some communication put together and agreeing with us.
With this, um, this was discussed at the work session, and this has to do with dedication of, of a road that was formerly a public road and at the landowner's request was being vacated, or is now a private road, it's County Road 11693, which had a request from the landowner to rededicate at least a portion of that road, um, for their needs and their purposes. Um, there have been some discussions back and forth, negotiation regarding the terms of, uh, conditions that the county would place on, uh, accepting this road in the county inventory. Uh, those negotiations were ongoing even as about, uh, an hour before meetings, uh, which I, I don't think anybody's had a chance to thoroughly review and consider the, the changes that they requested. Uh, so that, that's where we are right now, is it's really still in negotiation, I think.
Okay, what the, last, we also pointed the committee. Do you have any thoughts, or...
Um, I haven't, like I said, I, I haven't had a chance to review the, you know, as long as I agree to what the commission had run forward, I don't have a problem.
The committee previously submitted the requirements that we were going to set, and I, and I understand that they've, they've cut those up a little bit, and, um, you know, I think we, we came down to what it was going to take, you know, in order for us to do it, um, to not accept liability and our money issue, but, uh, I, I don't know exactly what I'll be taking out of the proposal.
Yeah, that's, um, I'm of the opinion if, if the committee's not, not, hasn't had a chance to review and not confident making a decision that way, take that time to review all the changes thoroughly, and move forward with a decision from the committee. Yeah, I would support that.
So, uh, motion to table, would anyone have to make that?
Motion.
Okay, we'll kind of, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, now, understanding any negotiation going on, I guess we'll have a, take a look at that and see exactly, has that been sent to all the commissioners for review, any of those changes?
I think so.
Okay, we'll make sure that everybody gets a copy of that.
Let me put it this way, I intended to, whether that actually occurred, I don't promise, but I did.
Uh, if the committee can also take a look at that and make it, and be prepared, however we live to move forward with that. Uh, so we have any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Okay, so that'll be tabled for that work session. Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda. So we'll move on to all the reports. Mr. Robson?
Motion.
Mr. Campbell, do you have anything?
The fact of the only thing I've got is we're still having issues with internet connectivity, especially with dispatch. It's dropping dispatch, and it's pretty regular during the daytime during busy hours. It's also the computer, which is what our cab runs on.
Correct.
Not so bad at night, but during peak hours, during the day, it's killing us.
Okay, I thought we were supposed to move it back a second, yeah. Anything else?
No.
Uh, Mr. Manning? Mr. Goodman?
No, sir.
Mr. Goffey?
No, sir.
Mr. Robinson?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, two things I do want to mention real quickly. Uh, we've discussed some property acquisition, uh, during county park hopefully, we'll have it presented there, proceed with that at the final meeting this month, and I, I think I sent an email, or this has been presented to everybody, the TV and lieu of tax, um, dropped, uh, 15%. I did a budget wide enough for the drop, I think, with some other things, we might be okay, but, um, it was a substantial drop, countywide. It was a million dollars for Jackson County Commission. Our general fund was about 260, 65,000, is that correct? So this was the most substantial drop we've had to date in the lieu of taxes, and we expect them, of course, to continue to drop as the coal plant closes and, and, you know, we see that, what happens there. Uh, we hope to have a long-term solution, uh, prepared soon and, um, move forward with that, but we just got to continue to work, uh, because we know that with the coal plant closure next year, dollars will probably be even less, so, you know, we'll continue to work towards that, but I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, where the TV and lieu of tax was. So with that, that concludes everything for our meeting this afternoon. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. All right, gentlemen.